We have two items on the agenda tonight. First off, safe and healthy housing.
Thank you, Council President Prince, members of the City Council. Chip Vincent from CED, joined by Angie Mathias, our long-range planning manager, and Jan Hahn, our head of finance and administrative services for the city. Hopefully, tonight, we can answer collectively all of your questions you might have with respect to the healthy housing initiative. Let me just say, this is something that we have been working on in CED and with finance for quite a while now. You know, the reasons for advancing the healthy housing initiative initially a couple of years ago was a simple recognition that almost forty-eight percent of Renton's housing is rental housing within our community. And another, and most of that forty-eight percent, forty percent of it was built more than forty years ago. So it's older housing we're talking about in our community here, given the breadth. When we first started the program and talking to the council, this was a proactive program that was going to require every landlord, either by the city or by a private inspector, to certify that every rental unit in the city met certain health and safety standards for the renter who used the domicile. We worked through this a long time with the Planning Commission and with stakeholders and with the City Council, in basically recognition a while back that, you know, we were throwing out a big net and we were treating all landlords the same. So the thought was, how do we really lean up this program or minimize it to the effect that we were really focused on dealing with only the landlords that had substandard rental housing? So the way we did that was reaching out to other organizations, other jurisdictions, to see how they dealt with the issue. And for us, we fell upon a couple of cities, Tacoma and Bremerton specifically, that had housing, healthy housing initiatives whereby what they did was they had a reactive process. Whereas when a landlord applied for a business license or a registration fee within those jurisdictions, they self-certified that the rental unit met certain housing requirements and criteria. And the onus and responsibility was on the landlord to self-certify that they met it. And that way, you were minimizing the program, you weren't having to create this whole inspection apparatus to go out there and certify them all, and you're simply putting the landlords on notice and allowing them to perform the inspections themselves. This significantly reduced the scale and the size of the program once we decided to take that approach and go down that path. When we discussed this last with the council back at the end of February this year, the council expressed some concerns about that program. While the council really generally liked the philosophy that let's just focus on the bad landlords, let's not treat all landlords exactly the same, there were some questions asked by the council with respect to how do we ensure that we are protecting the renter from any kind of landlord retribution? Because under a reactive system, the city is responding to a request for inspection, and it could put the tenant in a circumstance where the landlord says, well, you know, at the end of their lease, I'm just gonna get him out of here. So we looked at this hard since we last met, and there's three provisions that are built into this that we think provide an adequate safeguard for the tenant for any retribution. The first is, is that we have a provision in the business license as part of the self-certification that the landlord would give us a right to go onto the premises to conduct an inspection at any time. They basically are giving the city that right. So we can go onto the premises with the tenant's permission, basically because the landlord has authorized us to do so. That goes a long way towards the landlord having any perception that it was the tenant that turned him in for any issue or problem they have. Secondly, we also included in there the fact that we have a provision where we do an evaluation of the external premises of the rental units. In talking to Tacoma, this is the predominant way they go into and inspect the inside of the home, is they say, most of the time, you can tell by what's going on on the outside, what's going on on the inside. So this is an additional provision, plus we have the third ability for anonymous complaints. So we are hopeful that with those three provisions added into the proposal, that we have effectively dealt with any concern about potential retribution. Now, I don't want to say that cannot happen, there always can be challenges between landlords and tenants, but to the extent that we can, we think we've created a firewall that provides some level of protection for the tenant. The other issue is the council wanted to, asked us to evaluate, is that how are you gonna deal with non-compliance? If we have a bad landlord who, you've said they don't meet the standards, you've gone out, you've done the inspection, what is gonna be the effect of that? And so we started looking at other jurisdictions in terms of how they dealt with it, and we quickly, and this was in discussion with our city attorney's office, said, you know what, we feel really good about the code compliance rules that we've been working on for years in Renton and where we are today. That is, we put, provide for a notice to correction, which is thirty days initially, and after those thirty days, if they haven't done it, we provide a fourteen-day notice that we are going to start finding them. After the fourteen days, we have the ability and the authority to find the non-compliant landlord, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day, and after that, we actually have the ability to put somebody in jail and go through the criminal process. In fact, this last year, through, we went through the whole process, and we actually ended up putting a non-compliant, not a landlord, but somebody who was non-compliant with our code, actually, in jail. So we feel good about the process that we have in place in terms of providing notice, but notice with real teeth, that as we go through the progressive process, there is an end result, and it doesn't just hang out there forever. So we, what we're recommending and what we've included in the proposal is, don't reinvent the wheel, let's just use our own code compliance processes that we have in place for dealing with penalties. And then the final issue the council had, if you remember, we looked at, we had two provisions in the proposal before. We had both a business license as well as a registration fee, and the registration fee was a sliding scale based on the number of units. And in fact, at the time when we shared this with you, we actually showed, based on some initial projections, more revenue than staff was necessary to implement the program. And you asked us to, you know, resize this, to try and balance revenues with our resource needs, and you also asked us to try to make this scalable in terms of, if you have larger landlords, there's a percentage increase in that. I, I'm gonna go into that part last, but a couple of other things I just wanted to share that came out of the last meeting was you asked us specifically, what were the rates of compliance in Tacoma and Bremerton with respect to this reactive method? It was fifty-six percent in Bremerton, Tacoma really had really bad records, so nothing we wanted to rely on, but for purposes of the program that we're advancing to you, we're assuming sixty percent compliance after one year. And if you remember, the program, the way this has been set up is that we spend the first year just doing public outreach to landlords principally, and then tenants after that, to make sure everybody understands what the program, how it's going to work and how it's going to be implemented. When Angie and I talked to Tacoma representatives, they said this was one of, really one of the hallmarks of their program that made it work, was not adopting it and implementing it right away, but taking a year to make sure the landlords and the tenants and everybody knew what the rules were, and to help inform and educate both sides of the equation in landlord-tenant rules, and that was really important. We have assumed sixty percent after one year of, and we're being very conservative in that assumption of the sixty percent compliance. We think it's gonna probably be higher than that, but again, based on what we've heard from Tacoma, we're gonna be very conservative in that, and Jan can talk a little bit more about how we've made the financing of this work, but you might ask, I'll ask and answer the question, well, how do you, how do you assume you're gonna be higher than the sixty percent? We have really good data from our utility billing system here in the city that we can parse out, you know, who the landlords and who the tenants are, combined with the King County Assessors database. We think having that one year to work on this program, we can figure out how to reach the landlords and hopefully be more successful with a proactive program that gives us a year in advance to do a lot of that outreach before the program is initiated. So let me jump back. So those were all the questions that were asked back at the end of February that we have worked through. We spent, the last question I haven't answered was related to the business license and how that works, and we spent a good part of the summer working with our colleagues in the finance department, trying to figure out how to make this, make this balance, you know, have revenues and resources equal each other, and part of the challenge we had is our business license, as we found out, is, was not a license that was flexible, that we could apply a different scalable rate to depending on the side, the number of tenants a landlord might have. And anyway, I'm gonna stop there, Jan, before I, I'm gonna take everything, and, and Jan will explain to you how the business license system works and how we've incorporated this into the program.
Okay, thank you, Chip. Good evening, members of the council. As you are aware, we're, the tool we are using for this program is the business licenses, and Renton's business license fee is not a tiered program, as Chip mentioned, it's a flat one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, so that, that applies to all businesses, not just landlords. Our largest business pays one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, our smallest little shop on the corner of downtown street pays one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And there's some very specific reasons why it is structured that way. First, it's very simple. It's simple for staff to explain to businesses, it's simple for businesses to comply with. It's, that concept of simplicity was one of the reasons that we recommended elimination of the head tax. That, too, was tiered based upon hours, and it was very confusing for businesses to understand, it was very confusing for staff to explain to businesses. So the, the concept of a flat fee is a very simple, simple structure for our businesses. Also, a second reason is that our tax and licensing software is set up just to administer a flat fee, and we, it was, it's also structured for compliance with File Local, and so that we have built a system that interfaces with File Local, which is the online portal with multiple participating cities, and we're estimating that if we were to restructure it and change it, it would, it could cost us in excess of two-hundred-thousand dollars. And not just the cost of rewriting our own system of record and the interface with File Local, it could potentially delay our compliance with Engrossed House Bill 2005, which, which requires that we join either File Local or the state business license system. And then last but not least, compliance, it becomes a much more difficult thing to audit if we have a tiered system. It's a very simple process by which we see a landlord is licensed or they're not licensed, an individual business is licensed or they're not licensed, unlike if we have, we're tiering it based upon tenants or number of units or whatever, then it becomes much more complicated to audit. And so for those reasons, we have chosen a very simple system, and that's how our business license fee for all kinds of businesses is structured, and so that is what the proposal is for the landlord license, and the Safe and Healthy Housing Program.
And if I can just, thank you, Jan, if I could just add a couple more things to that. The, the first is, is that for the business license, what the landlord gets by requiring a business license is the fact that now all the landlords are playing by the same set of rules. We have an even playing field. This was one of the things that we heard from the Tuck Willa representatives after they had adopted their program, because it assumes an even playing field for the first time. The, some of the landlords that don't maintain the quality of standards, they're brought up now, so it's an even playing field. So the landlord is actually getting the benefit of a common minimum standard of acceptability for health and safety that they don't have today with the business license. There is a couple more issues here, too. The other is that, I recognize in saying this, that the council hasn't adopted this, but last year, at your retreat, you had us work on a few different items, and one of them was short-term rental, rules and regulations. We've been moving forward with that through the Planning Commission and the Planning and Development Committee, and while I recognize the council hasn't acted on that, there are specific provisions for short-term rentals that are being advanced, but the vehicle or the tool to do that is recommended at this time to be the business license. So part of the thought processes here is, if you're gonna use the short-term rental rules and the business license for implementing that, you know, we'd like to be, to Jan's point, be consistent and keep it simple and do the same thing for long-term rentals as well. So from our point of view, that made sense as well for using the business license. Anyway, with that, we've shared a lot with you, so I would like to try and answer between the three of us, any questions?
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Please.
Yeah, I have a few, so I appreciate everything you've done and the new directions you've taken with our questions and so forth, and, and I, I'm really, I really embrace what we're trying to do, that we, we really have some properties we wanna clean up, and I, and I respect everything the staff's doing on that. I am, I, I keep thinking of new scenarios that, that I wanna make sure we've, we've worked out in advance, because one of my concerns is that we're, over my years on council, I've, I've been approached numerous times by, by tenants that have landlord complaints, and it's been something that's been easy to say, well, you know, that's, that's between, between you and your landlord, it's not really something that the city gets involved in. I do feel like we might be sort of stepping into some of those disputes, and I guess I'm not necessarily against doing that, but I, I also think that it might be a lot more than the city expects, and I at least wanna be prepared for that, because there's, there's cases, for instance, where there's, there's tenants that have poor housekeeping, you know, capabilities, that they don't maintain the yards like they should, and we could go into a property like that and, and tell the landlord they have to do something about it, and, and they could hire a gardener where the lease might say that the tenant's supposed to mow the lawn, but then they'll need to be able to pass the cost of that gardener on to the tenant and, and/or, you know, renegotiate a lease and things like that, and we'll probably find ourselves sort of in the middle of situations like that. So that's, that's okay, but I did wanna get clarity also on, you know, there's almost two categories, there's, there's a lot of situations where people have, they'll have a house, and then they'll get a roommate to help defray the cost of paying the mortgage and the utilities, but the homeowner lives in the property, and I guess I'd like clarity of whether, in those roommate situations, whether they'd have to do this, you know, the business license or not, and my, my hope would be that maybe they wouldn't have to, but.
I, I, yeah, no, we, if the, if the primary property owner is living on, at the premises, that wouldn't fall under this.
Okay. I, I think that that would be the right choice, because there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of those, I think, but.
Yeah, I can't imagine where someone gets a roommate to help with their, where they think, well, I need to go get a business license from the city to do that, so.
Yeah, okay. Another question I'd had was, and I'd mentioned this one once before, and maybe you'd come back with an answer, but if somebody had, say, they have a, they have a single-family home, and they've hired a, a management company to manage it for them, would it be sufficient for the management company to have the business license, or would we also be asking the owner to have their own business license?
It, it could be both. It could be both. It, it depends on what their business relationship is. For, I could see a lot of situations, just because we have so many landlords in Renton that live out of the area, where they, under contract, would allow a management organization to fill out the business license for them, and that would be completely acceptable.
So, so when you say it could be both, you mean it could be either?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if I just had one rental house, and, and I, well, maybe this program would make, would be that final straw that would encourage me to put it with a management company. I mean, whatever, but I could, I could go to, I'll just make up a name, Caldwell Banker or somebody that does residential property management and put it with them, and then I wouldn't have to, to do the, the forms for the city business license.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, frankly, I think that's the right answer, because that's, I, I mean, I would think then this, we'd kinda want it on record, who it was, as a city, we'd want it on record who it was that we'd contact about working through the, the issues, and I think it should be the management company, that makes sense.
Yeah, I'll just say, because this has become such a business for people, that having those property management associations has become more than a cottage industry. I mean, it's become a real business and industry out there.
Right. And, and if I may, just.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah, so another thing then, then that I was kinda getting back to the first point I was making about how, and it's gonna be, it'll definitely be different with apartments, the apartments, you know, that, I think it's, it's a little more clear who's got the, the maintenance responsibility for the exterior, and I agree with your point, you can, you can often tell the problem properties by just looking at the exterior, so I, I agree with that. But with the, the single-family homes, you know, I almost wonder if we, if, as we move into this, if we wanna have clarity, not just on, on what we're expecting of the landlords, but, you know, also what, maybe what we expect of the tenants, so that a tenant couldn't call and, and say, hey, the landlord's letting my grass get really tall or, or something, and then have us just walk in and find out, well, under the lease, that, that tenant's responsible for maintaining that. You know, and I, I know that when I went to, when I attended UC Davis, the city of Davis had a, a model lease that they recommended people use, you didn't have to, you could have your own lease, but it just sort of, sort of had a sort of standard codified suggested, you know, responsibilities. I don't know if we could do that, but I, I just have a feeling that, that, that those relationships between what the landlord's expectations are and the tenant's expectation, I mean, one thing that could be good for landlords out of this program would be if the city, there's problem landlords and there's problem tenants, and I, to the degree that the city can help on either side of the equation.
Yeah, if I can, thank you for that. You, you started your discussion with talking about the city getting in the middle. I will share with you, we already are in the middle, in many cases where we have landlords and/or tenants reaching out to the city, we just have limited code authority at this time to get in there and deal with some of the circumstances and situations that would be authorized by this. But this program, we pared this back, it includes three program, or three positions as part of the program, an accounting assistant, three, to help with finance in terms of the business license and all the financial tracking, a code enforcement inspector position, and the last and most important to your question, Councilmember Corbin, is a housing ombudsman. And that housing ombudsman, that is seen as a neutral intermediary that can provide the kind of role and assistance that you're describing for both the tenant as well as the landlord. And it's, the hope is, and this is after talking to Tacoma, and they thought this was the most important aspect of their program, that allowed that neutral intermediary that really could go back and forth between the landlord and the tenant, to try to harmonize and work out the issues, end up with a good result in the end, but without unnecessarily some of the bad feelings that could happen if it was just the landlord and the tenant dealing with each other. When we started this, we actually had a kind of a stakeholders' open house, and frankly, I think we heard more from landlords about some of the challenging tenants.
Yeah.
They had, that they frankly shared some stories that make your point, that it's, it, you know, it's, not either side is completely okay in these things, it has to serve both.
I could say, yeah, just, and I, then I'll yield my time, but I just wanted to clarify that, you know, while I keep going to the example of not mowing the lawn, what I'm really thinking about is that there can be tenants that maybe have mental illness that, that are hoarders, for instance.
Yeah.
So the city could come down and tell the landlord, well, we don't like the way this property is being kept, you need to fix it, and then the solution for the landlord is to evict the tenant, and, and then we have somebody that's, that's got mental illness and no longer has a home, and that's the kind of thing that, it's a lot more difficult to work through, and that's, that's kind of, I, I wanted people to know this isn't really just about mowing the lawn.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, and that, that housing ombudsman would be somebody with a full range of resources to help in those unique situations.
Any other questions from council? Mr. President?
You knew I was gonna ask.
I did.
First of all, I wanna ask Shane a question, because if, if we do the business license, and they have a management company, and it gets to a position where it'd be a criminal citation, would you be able to issue the citation to the management company?
We'd have to look at all the circumstances, and I.
We weren't expecting that one.
I haven't reviewed the draft code to see exactly how it will be written. It could, it could be written that way so long as we had it, that someone's designated as responsible, and it was clear that that person had taken on responsibility. I believe how we have it right now, oftentimes tenants can be held criminally responsible, owners can be held criminally responsible, property managers, whoever's actually in control and has an ability to fix the problem is who we hold responsible. So I imagine that's how it would be done here, too.
And then, I guess the other question I have is who exactly is going to be covered by this? Or, I mean, you go up, you go up the street, you see, okay, X, Y, Z house, the owner's living in the house, but they're renting the basement, you know, it's a full apartment, whether it's legal or illegal. Would that person have to get a business license?
Most likely not. Yeah, if, again, if we are only looking at it from the point of view if the landlord is not living on the property, so if the landlord's living on the property, the city would not be involved through this program.
Okay, so we, we just wipe out a whole bunch of people that are renting, and then what about condos, people that are renting condos?
Yeah, condos would be required, too. Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that would be, because again, the landlord isn't living on, living on premises, so it'd be treated, a condo that's being rented would be the same as an apartment.
Well, what, I guess I'd look at a, if I have a house, and I know I can change that, what if that, so if the landlord isn't living there and he's renting the house out and the apartment downstairs, then they both have to have a business license?
No, I said, if the, if the landlord and if the property owner is living and rents out his basement, what we're saying is, the property owner's living on site, there would not be subject to this program.
And I guess, I, I'm just concerned with the, the fairness of it, of it, don't get it wrong, I'm all for this program, that's not where I'm coming from at all, I'm kinda like Mr. Carmen, I just have some concerns that it's fair to everybody going, and the, what you first presented to us, last time, or excuse me, last time was the Tacoma model and, and how they structured their fees, which I thought was very fair, and I'm very disappointed that, that we haven't figured out a flexible way in the city. We have some really, really sharp people, and it seems to me we're just taking the easy step of get a business license for one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and I don't care how many units you have, so you take the, the one person that has one rental pays the same as down like at the landing for one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and they sold their apartments for the two of them for about three-point-eight million dollars. It just doesn't seem, I don't know, it just doesn't seem fair to me, and I, and the other thing that concerns me is that a lot of times it's a mom-and-pop rental, and it's a fairly inexpensive, inexpensive rental. As we start adding these fees, that's gonna get added. rental, as we start adding these fees, that's gonna get added to that person's rent, so it just doesn't, I, I guess, I'm really, really concerned that with all the expertise we have in the city, that we couldn't figure out how to have a sliding scale, and I, I just, I mean, to say, well, our computer doesn't do it, or it's gonna cost us $200,000, there should be, can we call it something else, because we're gonna be looking at the fee schedule here, and we charge all kinds of different fees on that, and so if you, if you were to take that model, your model, then everybody should be paying the same fee for everything, and, you know, and I, I did have a conversation with Chip about ADUs, and apparently they'll, they will, would they have to have a, a business license because it's a separate house?
Don, you finally stumped me on that one, I had not, you know, ADUs, if you'll give me, I, I'm gonna have to think that one through, because the, it's one of those ones, it's, it's kind of both, you have the, our ADUs require that the owner live on premises, but it's a separate domicile on the same lot of property, so can you give me a second to confer, and, that's something we haven't actually really thought about, so, and we could deal with in the final ordinance, but let me, let me give that some thought, I had.
Okay, and I, and I guess another, another example is of our conversation the other day, if you're, in an effort to encourage people to build ADUs, if you're, you're gonna suggest, or I'm assuming it's coming through, that if you build, if a builder comes in with two ADUs, we'll give them the permits for the third one for free, well, we can be flexible there, why can't we be flexible here, and I guess that might, that's my question, and if it's just simply a computer issue, then we need to hire some computer experts.
I think Jan's gonna read it.
So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that while the, our program is structured like Tacoma's in terms of the goals of the program, and some of the concepts of how it's administered, their business license fee is totally different, it is a tiered system for every business, so they've long had a different sort of system of record that processes different, processes totally differently, so it's just a different structure there, so they can accommodate it where our, our system is just not set up to accommodate that.
I, I guess I, I can't, I just think with all the technology that we have, and all the smarts we have, that we should be able, somebody should be able to figure out how we can have a structured fee, but that's, and, because I think it's, again, the small guy's paying for the big guy.
Ryan?
Thank you, I gotta be honest, Don stole my thunder a little bit there, I was, I was hoping to stump you with the ADU question. That one hit on my mind immediately after Randy's question, but I'll throw another one in there, too, because I do think these things need to be thought about, and my thought, I would had, I was coming from the same place where I imagined it would be per dwelling unit, now, the basement example certainly makes sense if it's all attached within, but if it was more of, say, a duplex configuration, because I know we're gonna have a lot of duplexes that would be, this would apply to, and the owner lived on one half of the duplex, would they have the same exemption, because that doesn't seem like they should, because it's a separate dwelling unit like the ADU regardless of it being attached.
Yeah, so, on this, so, what we have done, this is, I apologize, because this is gonna be a great answer here, but because the final ordinance for this has not been written, we've just done the outline of the program, frankly, whatever the council wants to do, whatever makes sense to you all, is the way we will write it into the ordinance.
That was the answer I wanted to hear.
Okay.
The, the other question I have is in regards to the cost, because I'll be honest, when this ordinance first came out, or the proposal to do it, I, I was not a huge fan, largely because I was, like Don, fearful of the cost on the impact of affordability, I was concerned it would be overly burdensome for landlords, and you guys went and found, in my opinion, a very creative and, and fruitful solution that didn't ultimately burden everybody, all the good actors out there, because that's who I was worried about hurting, I just want to make sure my, my math is correct on this one, though, that fee that would be passed on, we're talking $12.50 a month, and I don't mean to minimize that, because for a lot of folks, that, that could be an impact, but I do want to clarify, it's, we're not talking about a sizable increase in rent as a result of this, if it were to be passed along.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, oh, I, sorry, one more if I may.
Go ahead, you're on a roll.
We'll see. The example at the landing, those large, larger apartments, are they over the threshold that they would be paying BNO and other larger taxes anyhow, would they be paying additional taxes beyond that business license?
Those apartments are, if they would, that's exempt under state statute, we cannot charge them.
Okay, so, so they would be the 150, the same as everybody else, there is no additional taxes.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's state statute, so we can't change that piece.
You know, if, if I can, we, we went down a lot of different, because we knew where the, where the council wanted to go on this, and we went down a lot of different paths, and specifically looking at, we thought the answer was gonna be using BNO, because that way it's incremental and you can get to the bigger, you know, landlords by using BNO, but quickly ran into a dead end on that as well, just because of the limitations in state law.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Go ahead.
I, I'm into compliance, you know, I, when do you anticipate you'll be at 100% compliance or 98% compliance?
I, the, the answer is, I don't know, I, here, here's what I do know, I think that we have assumed very conservatively that we'll be at 60% after the first year, that is, because we're taking a year where we're just doing outreach and education, we're assuming 60%, I'm, the, so after one year, I think that's a good number, I think we're gonna start going north very quickly, based on the good information and data that we have in our utility billing systems, where we can see where, if the billing address and the owner address is different, similar to the King County Assessor's database, there's a lot of programs that we can utilize to ferret this out, now, so figuring out, you know, who they are and where they live and their billing address, that's the first part, the second part is the compliance part, and, you know, I think working with our city attorney's office this past few years on code compliance and being really serious about progressive action, the notice of correction, the daily fines, and then now, we finally have the ability to take these to be criminal, that's pretty serious, and we get people's attention and we get compliance now, we have some data that we're gonna share with you on nuisance properties later today, but I, you know, I, I kind of hate speculating, Don, I've been trying to reach a number, Jan, I, I'm, I'm thinking that we, after the second year, we should be over 75%.
We do have good tools available to us, so, and with the additional staff, we should be able to get better than 60% compliance, I would think.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, this is a $500,000 a year program, roughly, with, with the employees, and the cars, and guests, and all the stuff that takes, it takes, so at, how much, at 60%, at $150 apiece, how, how much money will we generate?
We're estimating that we would, of the $65,000 cost, $120,000 would come from BNO tax to supplement the licensing, so as that 60% number goes up, we should have to rely on the BNO tax to supplement this a lot less.
So we'll be.
So, the, the, so directly to your question, assuming 60%, we would generate $345,000 a year, assuming 60%.
And then, I guess my, just harping on it, that it, this is, I've, I've gone, fortunately, unfortunately, I've gone through the budget and started, you know, the salary costs, the car costs, and then you look at what it costs to set up a workstation and, and all that, I think the cost of this is gonna be well over 500, because even if I take your budget numbers and add them all together, it's 440,000, so, it looks like the general fund will be subsidizing this, and I don't have any problem with that, as long as we all know that. Anyway, and I will forever, I know, I know it'll go, but I, I will forever not like the $150 business license fee, because I just think there's gotta be a, a way around it that, that is fair, fair to the small guy, and, you know, we say, yes, $12, Brian, I agree with you, $12.50 isn't gonna hurt, but when you got somebody that is making $15 an hour at the top wage, and they get a $12.50, which I, I would guess that any landlord's gonna round that up to 20, you know, just because the hassle of having to do it, you know, that all adds up, and, and that's a little bit of my, my concern, and you're gonna find that, where, where it's just the person with one house, those rents are not gonna be, you know, that, they're, they're not gonna be up at the higher end of the market, so, and I understand that that's, this is what, what's gonna, gonna happen, but I just will go on record as saying, I just don't, for some reason in my mind, I just don't feel that's fair.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I have got a committee report here, the committee of the whole concurs with staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt code changes to implement a rental registration program to ensure rental housing units meet basic health standards, the committee further recommends that an ordinance be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. Any issues with this committee report? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
2019, 2020 budget?
Okay, thank you, President Prince, tonight, we're gonna complete the department presentations with the last and final department, the police department, then there are, the committee of the whole, last, we can ask that we come back to have a little conversation about debt management and the fee adjustments, and then we'll talk, we'll wrap up with some of the additional budget requests that we heard from you all, and get some direction as we prepare the final ordinances and whatnot for your deliberation, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Van Bailey.
Good afternoon and thank you, council, President Prince, council members, I am Ed Van Bailey, I'm your chief of police, for the Renton Police Department, as we go forward. Before I start, I would like to just say, after seeing all of my colleagues' presentations, job well done, in the event mine isn't as successful, I brought a box of things. I heard visual aids can really highlight a presentation, so I brought some of those things. All right, highlights for the 2019, 2020 budget proposal, for the Renton Police Department, I narrowed this down to just some of these new programs, and am, am prepared for some questions at the end, the police department is requesting an additional one and a half full-time employees and converting a current officer position to a sergeant position, we'll be asking to increase our ammunition budget just due to increased costs in ammunition itself, equipment purchase on a parking enforcement vehicle and ballistic armor for patrol, one of those is in the box behind me, and you will see an increase of interfund and transfers out to fund the take-home vehicle program that was approved last year. My first slide, just to orient the slide, is, of course, some, some pictures that we have taken, but the, the budget amounts that are impacting us is the ammunition, and the numbers you see there are the numbers that were budgeted for 2018, or, excuse me, what's being requested for the 1920 and what we had in 2018, those venues at the bottom of, as far as the training, that is what we actually expend our ammunition on, some points are, we currently spend 60,000, or are currently budgeted 60,000 for ammunition, but have free, every year have paid over 70,000 just to keep up with the cost, our current platforms for ammunition are for the rifle and handgun, a 40 millimeter, 40 millimeter less lethal weapon, and simunitions, and simunitions is some paint rounds, I've both brought a 40 millimeter round to show you, and some, some simunition rounds, because simunition is something we would use in that bottom left-hand picture, active shooters, you know, it's gonna go into my ballistic, ballistic protection presentation, but we do active shooter training in Renton, which is where all the Renton Police Department goes to a school out in Buckley, an abandoned school, and we practice active shooter in case there was an actual shooter that was taking over the school, and that's the importance of the simunition, which is really just a very painful paint round. We run, currently, we run four sessions every year of firearms and defensive tactics, these are the, the places that we would use those, our ammunition price during these times, or the last few years, has increased, it's now estimated at over 76,000 for, to include all the ammunition that I've described, and we just really wanted the budget to reflect the actual costs that we're spending for the ammunition. Our enhanced ballistic protection for patrol operations, this is something that is relatively new, but it's as a result of the active shooter and the, and the shootings that we've had across the nation, I did some statistics, the FBI in 2016 reported there were 20 active shooter incidents, in 2017, there were 30, these numbers continue to increase, in 2018 alone, just in schools, we've had 65 gun incidents, that doesn't mean people were necessarily shot, but guns have been fired in the schools, not always casually. The Level III armor provides an increased protection to our responders, vital areas to include the head and major organs, with our current protection and the weapons being used to survive an active shooter would require just luck, our vests do not stop the rounds, the current vest I'm wearing would not stop those rounds. Equipping each officer in patrol provides adequate protection to survive these types of encounters, provides our officers with the knowledge and comfort they have a better chance of being effective and surviving one of these encounters. So these are what the plates that are being requested, they go on the front and back, and they're just a lot heavier, obviously, than, than what I'm wearing, and to our quartermaster and range folks, they went ahead and, and had shot one, just to do their due diligence in finding out the best actual plate carrier, so you could see, or maybe you can't, but this one has been shot, and you can see the level of protrusion that would actually go into the body, and that's 10 times stronger than this, than what we're wearing here, so.
Oh, hold on, we've got a question, go ahead, Don.
Sir. Now, does every officer on the street have that, or is that just if they're gonna be going in on something?
We, we currently just have the vests that we currently wear, these are what we would be requesting for all of patrol.
Okay.
So each patrol officer would have the actual vest carrier, and then the front and back plate.
Oh, okay, so they'd be wearing the normal bulletproof vest and then this additional?
Yes, sir, some will, some can wear it in, you know, the carrier that we've included, or they have a vest, you see some of the officers that wear an actual vest on the outside, these will fit inside that and they can wear those full time, they're, and you can, you can touch and feel these, they're not too heavy, but to wear them 12 hours a day is a, is a pain, so they would at least have them in their car, this also includes the, the helmet, and I like the picture, as, as we went through the training, would you rather be the one with the helmet or not the helmet, so, those ballistic helmets are straight, you know, similar to like what the military would wear, they would keep those in their vehicles, so in a response, they have the equipment with them, the way we respond to active shooter training is, you know, the first, first few officers that get there form a team and they go inside, they're not waiting for fire or additional elements, so this is just one of those things that provides that safety and security and a certain comfort level, if there is one, when they go into those situations, the fact is, we, we enter these kind of situations now, not so much in the school setting, but active shooters are people with knives and things like that. The part-time to full-time parking enforcement officer, currently, we have a part-time parking checker and then one full-time, Diane, with our current one and a half full-time employees, they currently complete on an average per month, has gone through their, their monthlies, together, they complete over 500 citations and warnings per month, they post 150 abandoned vehicles, and they tow over 40 vehicles, and then a new. And then a new thing with the automatic plate license reader, automatic license plate reader, which is on the vehicle, they're now identifying stolen vehicles. So as they drive by it, it's the plate and a reading comes back and lets us know if it was stolen or if there's some kind of warrant attached, so. They are, even with that current number, with our traffic officers in patrol, they're still being requested to take some of those additional calls for service, because it's just one of our, besides traffic itself, parking is one of our largest complaints. So there's, all that to say, there's a lot of, a lot of work to go around. The revenue currently with our vehicle generates over 100,000, and with the expectation of two vehicles, it wouldn't change, that would be the same amount. And the conversion of the halftime would just simply be the additional in, in pay and benefits.
So the parking, excuse me?
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
So when you get two full-time parking checkers, there'll be someday that both of them will be on, because they work a 410, right?
Correct, sir. They would do a 410, they would, our coverage would be basically Monday through Saturday, with the heavy days being Wednesday and Thursday. Sunday, there's no time limits on parking, so there's no, there was no particular reason to have them out there. But on those, those heavy days, they can then go back and take more of the onesies and twosies of complaints that come in from individual residents. You know, sometimes we have large-scale parking issues, but they can go to that one abandoned vehicle. There's one up on Renton Hill, I know that I got received myself about a vehicle. They can go to a lot more of those things and either post them or check them, verify them for any kind of warnings.
You're preaching to the choir.
All right. Adding one police service specialist. These pictures were just taken down in our records room, and they probably only count for maybe a tenth of what the records we actually have down there. We would like to add one police service specialist, this would bolster our records team. Our records requirement currently is to respond within five days with records or a time estimate. To do that, they have 21 physical and electronic locations to be searched. Part of these are receiving court orders, entering them, and second-check them within 72 hours, and these are just the requirements that the front kind of has. With the three specialists assigned to records that we currently have in 2017, they handled over 2,600 public records requests, they handled over 1,700 non-public records requests, and those include, you know, insurance companies calling in, I want a copy of the report, DSHS for any kind of reports, or outside agencies calling in for warrants and things like that. And they've also entered over 1,600 court orders. Currently, they have over 170,000 records in our possession and 62 active requests. So I can go to Stephanie and ask about the public records that they're currently working on, and she can pull up a database that shows me the current records that she's working on, and Megan would be able to tell you that some of those are very extensive, as far as reviewing thousands of emails, redacting and all that, and one person sitting there and reviewing that. So there's a lot of work to be done thanks to the records. The additional staffing provides increased timeliness and response and reduction in overtime. They, right now, it's just to backfill some of those requests and destroy some of the records that we are supposed to destroy. There's just a constant flow of work, so the request for an additional records individual would certainly help us alleviate some of that. As our traffic division. Converting the open officer to a sergeant. Last year, we had a frozen position, and this was due to, we had an officer that was out at the academy as an instructor. They had left the academy and the position was froze, and so we had this position, and we're talking about ways and what we could do with it, and realized, thanks to, you know, the take-home vehicle, the lateral bonus, and some of the other things, that our staffing is getting up to such a level where we can, we can start filling our specialty spots. And those specialty spots include traffic, which is now becoming full. As a result, until recently, the Patrol Services Division had two sergeants. Due to minimum staffing in the division, only one was used, and the other transferred to admin services to assist with backgrounds, the SRO program and social media efforts. Soon, the division will have 13 commissioned and non-commissioned employees working for the one sergeant. Patrol Services currently handles the most common complaint the department receives, and that's traffic. This complaint is often handled by the sole traffic sergeant directly. This is Sergeant Judd, who will answer phone calls and emails and take care of the complaints by himself. Not just the traffic complaints, but it's the parking, speeding, and animal control is also responsible for that division. We're asking to convert the position to a sergeant for the proper supervision, span of control, and better service, splitting duties on special events and community inquiries, that would be the complaints, and talk about the different neighborhoods that have parking complaints and speeding problems. So the industry standard, I think, is six to seven folks for one supervisor. With one handling 13, it potentially could be a bit much. We would ask for this position in 2020. As it stands now, I think we still have two people or two or three people to hire to fill that division, and we're hoping to do that within the next year as the numbers continue to increase as far as our staffing levels. And then, of course, the conversion in 2020 would be the additional 35,000. And now, any other questions?
Any questions for Chief Van Bailey?
I'd be pretty well with that, sort of all mine.
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Guy, chief, great job, I really love the show and tell. In page 3 slash 95.
Yes, ma'am.
Bullet number four says, bonds previously budgeted for capital outlay were shipped to other budget categories. Can I know how much and where did you transfer the money? And if you don't know, it's okay if you guys back.
I forgot my team of colleagues and professionals here.
And while they're looking at that, may I?
Yes, please, go ahead, continue, Ruth.
The other part is that in the, in page 3 slash 97, in your 2019 and 2020 goals, you didn't highlight the, to strengthen and increase efforts to better serve our diversity, multicultural, and multilingual community. I know that you guys have been working on that, but I just want to make sure that that is one of our main goals for the department.
Yes, ma'am.
And that will be, thank you.
Any other questions from council for Chief Van Bailey? Mr. McGurk, go ahead.
Just one quick one on the chest plate, just out of curiosity. Did you say what the firearm that was used to cause that?
There were several that we used, but the one specific. That one, that one specific that I think was an AR.
Okay.
That, I could bring that up, but.
That answers my second question, is it a, from a firearm that's pretty, and that does answer the question that people can obtain fairly easily and readily?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
And you could see on the front, the entrance, you could barely see.
Yeah, I think money well spent, but just wanted to know, yes, how prevalent a firearm that could cause a damage would be.
So I do have one question.
Sir?
So for the goals for future, one of the conversations we've had over time is body cameras. Is that something that we need to start looking at and budgeting for at this time? Should it be part of our goals looking forward, or?
Yes, sir. You know, we've done a lot of groundwork as far as the, you know, trying out the different venues and things like that. One of the reasons we were requested the additional records specialist is, kind of gives us a head start on the introduction of body cams. There's still some things going on with the legislature as far as ACLU and the proper use of body cams, but I think it's eventually, it's something that we're gonna have to do. For the officers, it's pretty easy, and it's welcomed. It's the records, retention, redaction, and that process that's, that we really gotta get a handle on. We've done some studies and worked with some of the other departments that do that, you know, Tuck Willoughby being one of the most, the closest to us. And initially, they just, they had started the body cameras and didn't, didn't bring any extra additional individuals to help out, any records or anything like that. And now they're asking for additional records and things like that, so. I think we're very close, and one of the additional records requests was specifically to kind of address that with maybe an additional two when the body cam proposal comes forward. So I think we are heading that direction as far as the timing. I could see it coming in the next, within the next two years.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Don.
Actually, this is just a comment, a couple comments that I liked in your budget book. Any home detention, electronic home detention, could you just let us know that the tremendous savings that we get in that?
Yes, sir. I actually sat with McMullen in Georgia today. The, I got some statistics here, let's see. Yeah, currently, we have 97 folks on electronic home detention. I think they average around 75 per month, and it's a monthly fee. We, the savings that we have, if, they count it in days, so they take the number of individuals that we have and the number of the days they're on EHD, as opposed to them being at SCORE or incarcerated. And it typically averages out to a savings of about 400,000 a month. If we have 97 folks on EHD, and we're paying the over $100 a day cost overnight, that would be, I think the 75 folks was about 400,000 that we're not spending. And it also brings in, of course, they basically rent the equipment, we rent the equipment, and half of that's paid by the individual on EHD, so it's a tremendous savings.
And the other advantage to that is that those people are still able to go to work. They're monitored, so they're not out doing, so we're saving 400,000 a month, but they're still working, which, which helps us. The other thing, gotta get my right thing here, and I just want to compliment you, you facilitated 4,251 hours of training last year. That, as everybody up here knows, is my mantra, that training is saving us a lot of money in lawsuits and everything, I just, and I want to say thank you. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah.
That's all.
All right. Any other questions from council? See, chief, we let you off easy.
But it took you longer than 13 minutes.
I was gonna try and fill two hours, so I, I got a whole box of stuff I can go through.
I understand Mr. Schultz got wet yesterday.
Yes, I saw that, the dunk tank.
That's why you're talking to me about the dunk tank, I didn't realize that.
That was all thanks to the mayor.
Well, thank you, guys. Debt management?
Thank you. At the last Committee of the Whole, council had asked for a discussion on debt management, and I have a slide here that, I guess it's, it gets kind of small to read that much print on a page, but it is on page 4-2 of your budget document. I think what this shows is that the city has very little outstanding debt. In terms of general obligation bonds, we have $53 million outstanding, 23.2 of which is direct debt that we have issued, 4.6 million for parks refunding bonds, 6.2 million for library bonds, 2.1 for quality energy conservation bonds, and then 10.35 million for infrastructure, Lake Washington, South Lake Washington, infrastructure refundings. And then there's 29.8 million outstanding that is not that we issued directly, but that we have a piece of liability, and that's $4 million for the Fire District 40 loan acquisition for Fire Station 13, and then another 25, 26 million for the SCORE bonds. And then in terms of the water sewer bonds, we have 22.2 outstanding, and 1.8, 1.9 million for the water sewer Public Works Trust Fund loans, for a total of 77.2 million dollars. This slide shows the debt that we could issue in the state of Washington. Based on our 2017 assessed valuation, we could actually issue up to $253 million in non-voted limited geo-bonds. We only have that 53 million outstanding, so we have over 200 million that we could technically issue, or legally issue. We have no voted unlimited UT geo debts outstanding, we have no parks and open space voted debt, we have no utility purpose voted debt either. So we have significant amount of debt that we would be legally authorized to issue. However, as I mentioned, the city takes a very conservative stance on the issuance of debt, and we really only have that 53 million outstanding. So that actually helps us when we go to the bond market, because we are seen as very, very conservative, and we have the ability to issue a lot more. So I will stop there for specific questions you might have about our debt.
Questions for Jan. Go ahead, Ruth.
It's related to this question, but it's, you can find it, it is seen in page 3 slash 91. So in 3H slash 91, in the highlights of budget changes, debt services increased by 1.1 million in 2019 due to project principal and interest payment for a parks major maintenance 4.5, LTE geo bond issuance. How many years, just remind me, because I know that you have given us this information, but I don't remember, how many years is the debt obligation?
That would be 20 years.
And how much are we paying for the interest in retiring the bonds for the Parks and Trails program?
Oh, I don't have the debt service schedule in front of me, but we would pay 1.1 million times 20, so.
You can get back.
And it'd end up being about, I want to say, 6 million.
Okay.
Interest payments over that 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jan, the council? All right, and move on.
Okay, the other item that council requested last week that we have a conversation about are the fee adjustments, and you have a schedule of the fee increases in your preliminary document on page 7-17. The changes to the fee schedule are highlighted in red print. The changes include setting document recording fees at actual cost, increasing golf course fees to market rates, which Kelly Beamer, our Community Services Administrator, discussed last week, setting new fees for special event permits at $85, Piazza Park Open Space Event Rental at 500, and Electrical Spiderbox Rental at 100, and then increasing classroom and gymnasium carpet fees. In terms of community economic development, they are proposing to increase permit, land use review, and development fees, and then Public Works is proposing to increase various fees. So they're all detailed in the book, you should have had a copy of that handed out for your binders last week. So with that, I'll stop for any questions you might have about fee increases.
Mr. Person?
On page 7-23, under development fees, it says building permit fees, and then in red, that's marked out, building permit fees are payable prior to the issuance of a building permit. I don't understand, are we gonna make them payable? I don't know why it's crossed out, that's why I'm, and I'm dealing off of this, this 2019 fee schedule.
Gonna rely on some other people to help me here.
So the request from CED was to remove the specificity of when the building permit is actually due. Right now, if I recall, 50% or a portion of the permit is due at the time of application, and then the rest is payable at the time of issuance of permit. And I think that CED would like to remove language in the fee schedule and be able to establish procedure outside, the collection outside of the fee schedule.
Brian, do you remember? Okay, so in.
Brian, do you remember? Okay, so in committee, we did discuss this, and I believe, going off of memory, I believe this has to do with the amount of work that's being done in planning and development, and then the, they're not being picked up.
Okay.
So, or sometimes ever.
Yeah.
We've spent the money on the consultants and the engineers doing this work, and it sits there and either.
I remember Chip mentioning this in his budget presentation as well.
So that's what this is regarding, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I guess then, shouldn't we have something in there? I think there's one that owes us over three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we have something in the fees that said they have to pay it upfront before we, see what I mean?
I think that's what this is doing.
And that's what they would, yes, and they're talking about establishing that procedure, but having that not necessarily specified in the fee schedule itself.
I guess that's where, that's where I was going, because it seemed like they were crossing out.
They were going backwards.
Going backwards instead of going forwards.
Yeah, I think they plan to come back and talk to the council about that very subject, but take it out of here so that we're not tied down because of what this language says.
Yeah, there we go.
Any other?
Okay, I had another question.
Go ahead.
It's mute, so I won't ask anymore.
Any other questions for Jan on the fee schedule?
On the what?
On the fee schedule. All right, seeing none, we will move on.
Okay, there were a couple of adjustments that we heard council mention as we went through the presentation of the budget. The first being a potential increase in professional legal fees by thirty thousand for the legislative budget, and the second being a traffic calming radar speed sign increase of another fifty thousand. You'll recall that we did add fifty thousand for the traffic calming radar speed signs to the budget, and there was a proposal put on the table to potentially increase it by another fifty thousand. What Greg Zimmerman, our Public Works Administrator, has told us, that if, with the addition of the fifty thousand that's already in the mayor's proposed budget, it can absorb that workload with the existing staff. However, if another fifty thousand is added to the budget, they would require another position be added. So that would be, with startup cost for that position, it would be one hundred and ninety-two thousand in 2013, and one hundred and fifty-nine thousand ongoing in 2020. So the total cost of adding that fifty thousand would be roughly two hundred and forty-two thousand in 2019, and two hundred and nine thousand in 2020. So we just wanted to open it up this time to get some general direction from the Committee of the Holes as we move forward with preparation of the ordinance for adoption. And if there's any other things you want to add, this is the ideal time to bring that up.
Well.
That was huge.
That's, that's, that's huge, and however, said that, I think that one of the largest issues, and the police chief just brought it up, is traffic safety, and that, so. I would like to suggest that we take a further look at it. There may be a more economical way to do it. It just seems to me that of the emails that we're getting from the public is, well, we just had one about parking, and I know people think it was, it was directed at the apartment house, but it was, I'm pretty sure, I'm guessing, that it's up there in the benson where you see people parked all over the place, and, and parking issues, parking safety issues, and speeding issues are what we're getting in the neighborhoods. I mean, that's, people are saying, why aren't you doing something in my neighborhood? And they, I think they don't, most of them don't care about a lot of other stuff that we do. So as we go down the line, I would really like us to take a look at it, to see if there's a more economical way to accomplish that. I mean, I see these big bills coming through for a lot of stuff on the vouchers, and maybe some of that stuff needs to go away, but right now, I'm happy to stay with the fifty thousand, but there's got to be something more economical that we could use, maybe with a volunteer program. And that could be, we were talking about legislative updates. That, to me, would be one of our, should be maybe one of our legislative points, to get permission from the state to do some type of enforcement with, in the neighborhoods, with the trailers and stuff that wouldn't be expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, that, so.
Anything else? Go ahead.
I'll just chime in on where I'm at, kind of on that fifty thousand. I generally would agree. I mean, we're already increasing it in this budget by fifty thousand, so I would like to wait and see, obviously, what that does too, certainly explore other options at the same time. I think that's sensible, but I think it'd be hard pressed to justify that level of increase. And I didn't hear you suggest that either.
I wasn't trying to adjust the plan, because I can't.
But, but yeah, that, I'm kind of in the same spot in that, and I, I mean, I feel good that we are proactively doing something in this budget beyond what we were already doing. So there is still improvement, and we are still addressing that need, I feel like, in this. The only issue I want to make clear, just on the thirty thousand for increase of legal, that would, if it's not used, would roll over, and then that would be thirty thousand total for the biennium, not per year, or?
I think the concept was that it would be per year.
Yes, I thought that was per year.
I think it should be per year, but if we don't, you know, the.
It's like an insurance policy.
If we don't use it.
Yeah.
It, it'll be the thirty thousand that'll be there, and I, and I surely hope we don't have to use it.
Yeah, if you don't use it, it will roll into fund balance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for budget adjustments?
I, I guess I just have one concern, and that's with getting a deputy director in community services. It's two hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And my concern, to be honest with you, is that if it goes into one department, then the next department wants a deputy director, and pretty soon, we're looking at a, at a big thing. And I, and just the report, I didn't get a good enough justification, in my mind, for, for that position, other than the justification was, well, the police department has this many people, and they have two deputy chiefs. And I'm here to tell you that the deputy chiefs and the commanders are in a whole different light. And I mean, I most likely shouldn't be saying this, but they, but they are the people who are going to be out there with the SWAT team, making critical life-changing decisions for the officers and our public. And so I think there's a different justification in the police department for, for two deputy chiefs versus, you know, than just the reporting, so.
I'm gonna turn this over to Bob, real quick.
Thank you, Council President. So I know we didn't spend a lot of time with this, and Kelly's here, can talk a little bit more about it, on the position itself, but I think what we found and ended up recommending this position in the budget was just the diversity around the services that are provided within that department. There's a pretty significant amount, when you look at the various divisions that exist there. And certainly, by no means are we trying to compare it to the police department, but I think if you look at the diversity, and then we've got really kind of two directors that are really responsible for that, for that level of work, it felt like there was an opportunity there to change the span of control of the existing director, which has approximately eight individuals. Rural Thumb is around five to six in terms of span of control. And then there's some additional opportunities for enhanced investment and improvement in the neighborhood program, which we've been talking about as well. So I know, Kel, if you want to add anything more, since you didn't spend a lot of time talking about it when we put the first proposal on the table.
Yes, thank you, council members. Thank you, Kelly Beamer, Community Services Administrator. And you're right, as we had a lot of, again, varied divisions to run through in the budget presentation, I didn't spend a significant amount of time on this position. To council member Person, absolutely not trying to compare at all to the police. I think it was actually a question if we had another department that had deputy administrators, and that was just the one that we had said we, that was who had, or excuse me, deputy commanders, and that's who we associated to just for the question. We do, I do have eight direct reports, and if council can remember, we went through pretty significant change with, we had six of my eight direct reports retire, or, and one took another job. So currently, I have five of the eight direct reports that have two years or less experience in their current positions. And we have had, as Bob was noting, a significant increase in our workload, and to our fault that we haven't been telling our story as well as we should, so that council's aware of everything that is coming into our department with new initiatives. Not only do we, are we at the table with new initiatives, whether it's the civic corps, parks plan, trails plans, family first, neighborhood programs, all those things continue to increase in the amount of volume that we do touch with other, not only other departments, which go through community services, through almost everything that we do. So we have major projects, Sunset, Fire Station Fifteen, elevators, Family First, so it continues, the number of projects and the significant size of those projects continue to increase as well. We just noted with, through the fee structure, with special event permits, those have increased. So we've gone from twenty processing to almost fifty processing, and those are outside the city that we have to coordinate with all of the other departments to make sure that if there's street closures that need to happen, anything internal code enforcement needs to be taken care of, permits that need to be taken care of outside of that, we have that. Also, it does create a succession plan opportunity as well, coming forward. We did think about how that would look in an organizational chart, and what we're looking at is having recreation and parks would fall, if approved, fall under the deputy administrator position. All of the other, in that position, obviously, would report direct to me, but then the varied position, or varied divisions that we have, so it's museum, golf course, facilities, parks planning that have all the capital, projects would still continue to report directly to the administrator. Again, it's a significant amount of work that's continued to increase. It hasn't just kind of stayed the same through the years, and we will continue to see increases how we touch all the departments and citywide. Again, with outside community groups, we coordinate with reach and continue to look for different ways to do business with them. We just have, again, a significant workload, so.
And just in closing, I think just because one department ultimately has a configuration that works best for that, doesn't necessarily mean use the same template or model to apply to the other departments. So each department's somewhat unique in terms of how they're structured, so just because we add a deputy in this department doesn't necessarily mean that we'd be adding a deputy, say, in the legal department, for example. We'd have to look at the scope of work and the diversity of the services they provide.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Person.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Bob. While I recognize the challenges that community service has had, and still has, I am not, I'm still not sure if carrying a deputy will be the solution. I would have liked to see or have seen different approaches and different, and different solutions, but, but I understand, I do understand that the burden your department has been huge in the last two years, especially for all the disparities that we lost, which is significant. And, but, but maybe carrying a deputy will be the solution, you know? But I'm not sure if that's the best use of our dollars. That will be my own concern, but thank you.
Before I call on the next council member, I just want to say we have rather seamlessly rolled into council deliberation. There were no other, I assume, adjustments.
Those were the only ones that we were aware of.
Yeah, I was saying, I was saying from my colleagues, there didn't seem to be any other adjustments. Mr. Profani?
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. So it seems to me that, in my short period of time on council here, that the department heads and the administration has done a very good job with being conservative with the approach towards adding employees. And I think even looking at this year's budget, and it seems like a number of departments have added employees here and there, and with, with, you know, kind of a cautious approach. I don't think there's anything that's out of line. I feel like we're taking the name department, or the name of this position, and turning it into a bigger deal than it really is. I mean, in terms of the amount of money that we're asking for, or she's asking for, it doesn't seem out of line with the other departments or what she's asking for this position. So it just, it feels to me like we're kind of getting in the weeds and out of what we're supposed to be doing here, in terms of how they're running their department, versus overseeing the budget. We're getting into how the city is run, and that just isn't our real house, so that's my take on it. Thank you.
Any other comments for deliberations? Real quick, go ahead.
Bottom news.
Okay, so I'm, before we do that, and I apologize if this came up last week, since I was homesick. I got a phone call last week about the neighborhood program, and someone lamenting, A, about how they feel like the connection that the neighborhoods had to their elected officials has been lost a bit since we revamped the picnic program, and just kind of lamenting the no neighbor to neighbor this year. They said there isn't a grant workshop. I hear there may have been. Where are we at, and what is the future of the neighborhood program going to look like? Because we, we took a program and we kind of reconfigured a program that was working pretty well, and I think we've probably had some fits and starts with that reconfiguration. Where are we at with what it's going to look like here for this budget cycle?
So, thank you, Council President Prince. The program itself, we have increased the number of opportunities for neighborhoods to be out and engaging with their community and with council. We do send out, if not weekly, depending on the time of year, bi-monthly, all the activities where the neighborhoods are active, doing either community events, or the city's coming out to support an event with them. We've reached out to, in 2018, to date, we've done thirty-six events with five more coming up. That's worked through our, whether it's through our grant program or just city-supported with our individual neighborhoods. We've increased the number of recognized neighborhoods, as I mentioned from the budget presentation, from seventy-two to one hundred recognized neighborhoods. Last year, we, we had seventy-seven applications that have come in for, whether it's for small grants, large grants. The years prior, we had thirty-four in sixteen, and only thirty-one applications in fifteen. So we're definitely getting more outreach to our community. We've not, I'm surprised I haven't heard that information coming from anybody that they're concerned about council presence, or council presence there. We definitely want to make sure that council has every opportunity to be present.
And so, real quick, I think the issue they, the issue as it was brought to me was, we used to have the trailer, and, and we had the chief of police out, and we had people out, and it was, it was, instead of it being a neighborhood-run event, we had city-run events, and the neighborhoods were coming there, and there are pros and cons to that.
Sure.
I'm just saying, I think that the, what was said to me was that they feel like the connection was, the connection to their elected officials was lost, because I'll tell you, I went to one of them this year, and it kind of, I felt more like a party crasher than part of the fabric of the event. And with the neighbor to neighbor, right, there wasn't one this year, correct?
We are, we're looking at, in fact, we're in discussions with Bob on some different types of forum. The neighbor to neighbor forums, which we've had in the past, have been similar to the picnics, which is why we were reevaluating and reaching out to the communities to see what they wanted, what would work better for the two-way engagement versus the city just downloading our information, if you will, to them, is that we were seeing less numbers at our forums, and the same or similar topics that we weren't really getting headway on. So our neighborhood coordinator has been out to fifty-five, actually fifty-six now, neighborhood association meetings, and has incorporated police, as well as CED for code enforcement items, transportation for traffic items. So we're reaching out and trying to get everything that we can to our neighbors, and we are looking at a new way of engaging. We will be having a grant workshop. I just spoke to Dre today. We're finalizing that and upgrading that from the feedback we received from last year's grant, grant workshop. So we will be having that.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Person.
I could not agree more with you than I'm agreeing right now. I, I have tried to go to most of the, of the, of the picnics and the neighborhood programs as I used to do in the past, for almost four years that I have been, I have been in this office. And, and I can see the difference between the way we engage with the community. And I can see the difference between the way we engage with the community and the way we used to engage with the community. What you state, I could not say it more clear, the fact that today is the neighborhood programs, and before it was the city coordinating and working with the neighbors, and it was expected for us to be there, participate. And yes, indeed, now they have a form that they choose to elect if they want elected officials to be there or not. And if they choose to have them, then we'll receive an invitation. But in the past, it used to be like it was expected that staff and us would be there. I don't see it coming back to the same level that we were, because I know that it's almost impossible, but because of the number of neighborhoods that we have, just because of, you know, it's too many. But I would, and I have mentioned this in community service before, maybe go back to have, I don't know, a certain number of these, of the, if you want to call it old-fashioned picnics, that when Don Fund created this program, was the intention to actually have a stronger connection between the city and the neighbors, and get to know each other and be closer to them. So thank you for bringing this issue, because it's really important.
Absolutely. I totally agree in that. We will continue to evaluate and improve as we can, and when we hear feedback from our community, as well as council members. And we also will continue to host citywide events for the neighborhoods, which we've done in the past, where we've joined, like North and South Renton Neighborhoods, or, you know, Benson Hill, or whatever, so that the city, and we do come out with the trailer almost to all events, or at least what the community wants from the trailers, the equipment and everything, we'll continue to support that.
Any other questions from council as far as deliberation on the budget? Oh, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, this is actually, really, it's not Kelly's, but this for the police department, the training facility.
I'm sorry, thank you, Kelly. I thank you.
That, well, she may be able to answer the question, because I think part of it's in her division. That it's for the fourth floor. I haven't seen anything in the budget for that, and I want to be sure that it is in the budget, and that also that we have a virtual reality machine, or whatever, for simulation in that budget too, because I think that is so important, and you could have one incident like Linwood just had, and it cost them over a million dollars. And the training prevents that. And we do a good job at training. We do, I think our police force is one of the best trained there is. I just want to be sure that they're getting better training, and that's going to take some dollars to do.
Yes, sir, we're actually in the final stages of the contract to get the work done, and so once we have that number finalized, we'll be working with finance to include those monies. They, we were aware of a, kind of a ballpark number that we've been working with finance, and we'll make sure that they get the best of the best in there, so.
And it includes a simulator, right? A top-notch one?
There will be, sir.
That was, that was the right answer. And I think, I think you could look up and down the row here, that they, everybody else thinks it's the right answer to have it.
Anything else as far as deliberation on the budget?
I do.
Please.
I just want to, for the record, thank you very much for all the work that you and the departments have done so far. But definitely, my biggest concern is that they, I'm sorry, that my biggest concern is that in the proposed budget for 2020, our base operating expenditure is higher than our operating revenue. I know that we are going to be taking money out of our reserves, but I will, I would have liked to see some, a more conservative approach, maybe leave some of these expenses of projects that we have for the 2020 to, in a moratorium, until we find out the money to cover those. In few words, we're going to be spending more money than the money that we are going to be receiving, and it's a serious concern. I know that the revenue that we have was in part, not the revenue, the reserves that we have was in part created because we knew that this was coming, but still, it's still giving me a little bit of heartburn to know that in every business or in personal finances, you know that you don't spend money that you don't have. So this is still a concern from my point of view. I know that I have a really conservative approach, but I will not feel good if I don't mention it or I address this concern.
And that's a very valid concern. The council was very astute many years ago in setting aside money in an annexation reserve account, because we knew we were going to lose $3 million a year, starting middle of this year from that state credit. So we did set that aside, and that is a big chunk of the reserves that we are using over the upcoming forecast period. And losing that is just very tough, and it's pretty hard to replace $3 million a year without cutting services. And I think the mayor structured his budget in a way that protected providing the high-quality services that our residents expect. So as we mentioned when we talked about the overview, at some point, the budget's very conservative, so the picture could improve. However, at some point, we may need to look at some sort of an adjustment to bring the budget back into a long-term financially sustainable position.
Thank you. If I can have a follow-up.
Go ahead, please.
Really quick. Even though we knew that those reserves were there for this, you mentioned it, that these reserves are going to be depleted, and it's at one time fund. So that is what I am concerned, because in every projection, we are almost getting into the face that we're going to hit another recession. So from my perspective, we should be looking into that, looking in that if we are going to face sooner or later another recession, I would like to see, right now, I would like to see that we don't plan to spend more than we are having, just, but that's my personal point of view, okay? Thank you.
Anything, Mr. McGurven?
Thank you. I think I had the same reaction when I first looked at it in terms of the big picture, and I'm by no stretch of the imagination fiscal conservative, but I would think I'm pretty responsible with money, all in all. And seeing the long term, you may recall, I think it may have been at the council retreat, I asked, would we be wanting to look at some of those revenue-based solutions sooner rather than kick the can down the road? And hearing that, you know, the money was set aside for that, I think that is perfectly logical. My question then would be, is there any reason to expect a change in direction, you know, a forecast to improve? I mean, to me, I'm kind of more in the same light, where I'm more fearful that we would be headed into a recession, and that would be the wrong time to add revenue to increase taxes. It would be very, very difficult to do that during those times. Now that said, while I was skeptical at first, I think each department did a fantastic job presenting this budget. I think the need was demonstrated. I don't feel like I can point to one spot, particularly in this budget, where I was like, well, that just seems frivolous. Achieving that level of services, you said, I think is very important, and, you know, well, maybe I would have been open to at least talking about revenue options for that same reason. I don't like to deplete that reserve, because I like to have that rainy day fund, you know, available when it rains and the roof's leaking. But I think this is the right budget going forward with what we have, knowing that there isn't an appetite right now on this council for revenue, and I think it's been suggested correctly that maybe, maybe it would be difficult to do that in this climate when we have the reserves to cover it, so.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we're not dipping into the rainy day reserves. This was just the reserve that was set aside for the annexation sales tax credit offset. So I can tell you that the minute we catch breath of the fact that maybe we're headed into economic recession, the mayor, Bob, administrators will be teaming up to figure out what's our solution there. We just, it was hard to feel like this was the right time to talk about a tax increase when we're above our target level for fund balance at the end of this biennium and in good, solid, healthy financial conditions. So this just wasn't the time, and we definitely have our eye on that ball, and we will not drop it.
Thank you. Mr. Press.
I think it's the right thing. I have no trouble with the budget as the way it is. However, but as we talked about, having the fund balance coming out of this year, we should consider putting that away for future, our future needs, instead of saying, oh, boy, we got all this money left over, let's spend it. That's, I think that'd be my message. Set and save it for that 2021 time period.
Any other comments from council? All right, so our next steps, tonight, we have a public hearing at our regular council meeting. On November 5th, at our council meeting, we have a public hearing. We adopt the committee report. We have the first reading of the 2019-2020 budget ordinance. We have the first reading of the 2019 property tax levy ordinance, 2019-2020 utility rate and user fee resolution. Then on November 19th, at our meeting, we have the second reading and enactment of all budget-related legislation. I also would like to echo a note of thanks to all of our department administrators for presenting their budgets. I think we, you all did a fantastic job. You worked hard to put together a really good budget. If there's no further questions or comments, we are adjourned.